Called order. Our. Mark four committee of the whole twenty four, twenty five expenses and audit meeting. Uh, we will start with the pledge allegiance and our multiple citizens. Allegiance to America, to its honor, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Start off first with a roll call, Mr. Suckett.
Mr. Buckley? Mr. Mackley?
Here.
Mrs. Souter, I'll, I'll come back. Miss Crew?
Here.
Mr. Flickinger?
Here.
Mrs. Swell?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Getz?
Here.
Mr. Kinchew?
Here. Thank you.
Your work.
All right, uh, for members of the public, uh, there will be one opportunity in this meeting, uh, for the public to provide comments to the board. Uh, we ask that you register in advance to speak on. Uh, agenda related items, all public comments, we limited to three minutes in length. We will have a timer for you to keep track of your time. Please state your name and municipality for the record and direct all comments to the president, vice president when addressing the board. Please note the board are listening, but please do not expect an immediate response or further actions they have to supervise and they will follow up. Okay, so we will, uh, move to, uh, the next agenda item, which is a discussion of the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five expenses. And then we'll follow that up with a discussion on the twenty two, twenty three product. So, you know, turn it over to him.
Okay, so I do not have any clearly new information for you. This is just to review. So the first, um, piece that I want to just go back over again is our timeline. And when, um, as you see on your paper, I have highlighted tonight's meetings to discuss. Uh, what I do have is some expenditures that are. It's not new, it's just a little bit more detailed. So that's a separate report. Our timeline would be, um, if need be another meeting next Tuesday, we need to, we don't, that would be awesome, but we do. Then otherwise moving into doing the public presentation on eight month first, which would be, um. You've seen somebody other presentations, just just going through some slides of the whole budget for the public, and that's a requirement that we have. So I would prepare and do that presentation on the first. And then hopefully on the eighth, we could do a adoption of the proposed final budget. It lays open again for thirty days and then we would do a final adoption in May. Um, and he was finishing up in May is giving our staff and teachers the opportunity to know what is happening for the next year. It also staffifies lets us get a head start before the other districts get started. Gets us a timeframe where we can start to move forward and set up reviews and so forth. That will be prepared. That's just a review again of the timeline. So we went through all the updated decisions on the packet that you had is just the presentation from last week. Um, with the only addition is again, the separate pages of the detailed expenses. This is just breaking out the expenses in a little more detail, uh, preparing last year to this year and looking at the different expense areas, regular ed is the one ten, and then looking at salaries, benefits, professional services, other services, supplies, et cetera. So I don't know if there are any specific questions on any of the items. We pretty much have last week covered all of the materials. I don't know if there's anything that you've had a chance to look at, have questions that we can continue to discuss the expenses or. There's. Anything else? Driver's education, does that include vehicles? No, um, first of all, driver's education, we only have, we have our teaching teachers that teach drivers and the classroom piece. The driving piece, if someone wants to take the driving piece, they have to pay for that themselves. So we have a contract with Perry, Perry, Perry Smith Drive and Community Classroom. And if a student wants to do that type of, uh, on road training, they have to pay for that themselves. So the district doesn't pay. So I don't know if there's anything else that you want to go down through and, uh, look at. We've covered salaries, we've covered the benefits. Um, this is just basically a detail showing me the breakout of the total. Compared to last year, a lot of the twelve hundreds you'll see on the, under the account number of it, on the far left side, the bold number, the four digit, that is, um, the function area. So we regular ads and then all the ones that start with one, two, like twelve, ten, twelve, twenty, those are all special ed. So anything that's one, two is special ed area. So as you can see, there's a lot of breakdown and a lot of expense areas with special ed. Then thirteen, ten, starting with the thirteen tens through the thirteen nineties, that's all like tech ed area. So thirteen, ten would be like our ad, and you can see the descriptions across from it, gestural arts, so.
I do appreciate the, the breakout, just as we kind of go through, um, just a question on the, the gifted support. So there's a significant drop in it, but is there a staffing change associated with that? So we're going. Yeah. Goes from four thirty five to one fifty seven.
Um, I think part of that is just, is just changes in some of the individuals. And they may not have gotten reclassed because we've had at the elementary. There, there were some new individuals who are in special ed. We haven't, it's the same number of positions exist. It's just that they may not have been transferred from their prior position into the code area. So they're probably still sitting in regular ed when they should be pulled. And that's something that what I'll do is I, I printed out, I have a report, but I'll go through and see if there's any variances between last year and this year. And then I look back and see if I can, most of the time I can just look at it and know that is because we pulled the staff from what's called staff planning in our sky gift system. So instead of planning it, it was on all employees and the positions that they're in. So if we didn't change, if someone made a change to another position, it's still putting them back in position they were in last year. So, um, we did have some people who moved out of, uh, the gifted area, so we just haven't put them in. So it's not elimination of the positions, it's just we haven't coded them.
Okay, yeah. Okay, yeah, because you can kind of say, just, which is really nice, you kind of look at the, the yearly summary and see kind of what's happening from last year to this year. Um, you can, you know, to me, it's, it's standing out that we've got, you know, some increases here in what I'll call special education. Uh, we've got, you know, an overall decrease in, uh, general, uh, salaries, if you will, in the, the, the first line item, uh, which is reflective of what, you know, we've discussed here.
You have this from last year that would include, uh, like previous year?
So, so, um, this is, this is the current year we're in.
Twenty three, twenty four, and then assuming next year means twenty four, twenty five, right? You have the one that you gave out to the board last year that has the twenty two, twenty three?
Um, I can, it won't come through on report like this. If I pull that, that'll come through on, uh, it'll be twenty three, twenty two, twenty three, twenty three, twenty four. So.
It'll happen, right, that like.
I can pull that, yes.
Is that easy to do?
Yeah.
Okay. That would be interesting, just for knowledge, if that's not a difficult task to add, you're already.
It's a set report that we have in Skyward. It just is an extended out, um. I think they're working on a report that was supposed to show like a five year history, but the version of Skyward we had, a lot of the reports were, are customized, like we have to build one or that we have asked them to build it because it's, it's a new level of Skyward, so they don't have all the reports that came with very basic. So we've had to request, but, um, I can easily pull that.
I would, I would appreciate that.
Then just a question, um, Lori, on the public presentation, uh, is that generally going to be a summary of the information that we've been reviewing over the past?
Right, it's, it's a summary, um, this year we've had a lot more meetings and a lot more detail. So basically what you're seeing now is basically my presentation. So, uh, yes, it's, it's just going to be a combination of all materials brought together.
There wouldn't be anything new.
No, it's nothing, it's nothing new. We basically have covered all of the areas of the budget. It wouldn't be anything new. It's just a little bit more of a pretty little presentation with some graphs and pie charts and so forth, just to show showing the, the revenue and here's the, this large piece is local, this piece is state, so forth. So it's perhaps just a little reviewing our mission statement here, the district, those sorts of things. But it's no, it's no new data.
Thank you.
Sorry. So the report with twenty two, twenty three, twenty three, twenty four, do you want that emailed or sent out to everyone?
That would be fine, yep.
Yes.
As we go forth, once we have, like if we were to approve this, um, if one of these categories needed to be changed, is that something we can do? Like if we have a new idea or we want to modify something?
Right, so when you adopt a budget, you have, budget stays as it is for ninety days. And then after ninety days, you can make, um, changes, I can transfer funds. So say we had, uh, just, just as an example, if we planned for sal- different salaries and benefits for autistic and we couldn't find a teacher, so we have to go back to the IU and I have the money sitting in salary and benefits. I can move that to professional services after the ninety days.
Okay, and, but that would still come before us, yes, or do you just?
The transfers such as that are basically, it's not increasing the budget. It's, it's just moving the money to where we need it to be. I mean, that's something we can always discuss with you and, um, in the past, if budget changes have been needed, I think we had adopted resolution that said if budget changes are needed, I have the authority to go ahead and make the changes. It's not increasing the budget, it's just moving the money from a salary category to maybe professional service. But that's also something that we can discuss if it's something larger. Sometimes we have, um, who might have music has a repair that's larger, so they're, they have a set repaired budget. And there's something larger that they fixed, so we can pull some supply. So something like that, I would just make the change because it's usually fairly mine. We have something large, like a whole program change, we would definitely be something that would come before the board and we would talk about. Making sure that everyone's aware of what we're doing.
Yeah, I don't, I think it, it would be too much of an ask to, you know, every piece of paper that changes, you know what I mean? Like, oh, we need twenty seven pencils. That I don't think anybody really questions, um, just maybe, just not on the dark, on the bigger things. Um, and I, I'm still trying to, as I think some of us are trying to learn like the scope of all this. So I don't even know what that could potentially look like, but just having, having the question to know that if we need to modify things that we, yes, kind of could.
In, so I give the example that Lori gave, but, um, so if there's positions that aren't feeling filled, we have to go to a service. That's something we're talking about, or something that here. So then just it's associated with that is we're going to have to take funds that were for staff, our staff, and move that then over to professional services, but that does come up as a part of discussion now. Something with the band, a big repair, I bet, a big repair for the band compared on a seventy five million dollar budget is, is minor, generally speaking. Uh, and that's part of what, you know, we, Lori, you know, manages the budget to what we approve. And then, you know, that's, you know, we, she's our expert, she does that. And, you know, if there's anything that, um, needs to be reported, she's been really good about doing.
Yeah, every, every conversation we had, she's been open, I fully trust her, um. But I, not but for you, but.
No, I didn't.
So, again, I just, the moving around of money, I don't want citizens to ever question if that was like a backdoor thing. Um, and for what I've seen so far, this board has great people on it. But we watch the news and we see other boards that are not so great. So I, I would just like to make sure that the people who, who might be watching too much news knows that there's, we're, we're doing our best, um, so for the bigger things, you know, um, if it's recorded, you know, if I ask, it's case somebody's watching.
And, and we would still be, pardon me, we'd still be presented monthly with expenditures, correct? So it's just a question of what bucket the money is coming out of. It's not necessarily a, um, a, a smoke and windows sort of thing. It's, it's just a matter of moving funds around, but funds that were ultimately approved by.
Yeah, what you would see is in that monthly report is that, so it has, uh, the budget and the date. So if funds were moved, what you would see is that it might have been a fifteen percent last month and now it's at twenty five percent. It's like, okay, okay, what happened, right?
Right.
You know, if it's, and then again, the, the, the budget items range, so it tends to be, I kind of focus on the tens or hundreds, the thousands. Okay, what's going on, then, you know, the thousands, because on a seventy million dollar budget, um, yeah. Not that you wouldn't pay attention to it, it's just not as important, some of the other indicators.
Do the, is there somewhere on, online where like the citizens can like see this or like how does that? See the budget, see the current numbers?
All the, all the presentations are online on our website and we have reports that we've posted. Um, this audit once it's approved, I don't like to have it on, put out on the website until we're given a chance to review it and, and are okay with the report before we put it out. All our, our budget, AFR, our annual report, all those things are out on the website that it is probably, I think it's back about five years ago. So all that information is there for whoever wants to take a look at it, so it's sitting up there.
Okay.
Yeah, and we have, um, which goes along with the audit, there's a lot of checks and balances that we have. So even if it is a small dollar amount, you know, our bank accounts in Arkansas every month, our auditors, so when they come in, they come in and audit from here, they look at bank statements, they check. You'll see some of the things that we do is we list out checks from each month. It'll be from this check number to this check number. They will check to make sure there's no gaps. Like, oh, what happened to that group of checks? So there, they check those types of things, um, to make sure that everything's accounted for, um, checks avoided and sure that it's listed. So those types of things are all checked by our auditor. Uh, they come in, they're in files, they're pooling, they do all the bank statements, they go through, they pull invoices. So they're reviewing everything that we do, so there's a lot of checks and balances.
Even internally to you, I would suggest, you know, so each of the expenditures, we have multi timelines within through administration to, um, you know, for those same checks and balances, we've been internal and external.
Right, so our internal process will be that someone's making a purchase for a budgeted, like, so it's in their budgeted realm. They would, if a teacher needs just trying to, they just supplies, like pencils, they would put in requisition to their building principal. The items we get would be, uh, the building principal would approve that. Then it would also then come over here, we would double check to make sure that they have money in the bucket, that it's coded correctly. And we would pay the invoice. Everything gets paid out of our district office. So we are a seat.
Okay, so there's like, there's multiple layers. Multiple layer, layer, then any of those layers, prospectively, are open to the public.
When you see your check registers, that's everything that has happened in the district. You're seeing the payroll run, check runs from check. Even though it's not check, it's direct deposit, you're seeing all the checks, all the.
Researchers, taxes.
Yeah, the taxes, although it's roughly saying the credit card, all the transactions on the credit card. So you're, every month you're seeing.
Do the teacher, you said individually kind of make a list of what they prospectively think they'll need next year?
Yes.
And they turn that in?
To their building, each building prepares their own budget, so each building principal is responsible for their building. So they work with their staff and have a process where they'll put in the items that they need for the next year. That person will review it, then it will come to me for review, and then I put it all together into what you're seeing.
Um, has there been, or is there a way that, like a procedure where if a teacher thinks that they need something, but maybe their principal disagrees, um, but it really is needed? I don't know if this happens, but is there a way to, to like double check that the teachers feel that they're getting taken care of? I don't know how to word that differently.
By this way, so it'll go instructionally through Dr. Stern or first and then me second. So that's what will often happen, so it'll come to Lori. Lori will review it, she'll have some questions, and then she'll meet with us, um, to ask about, you know, is there anything from our understanding educationally that, you know, those needs were better, or, you know, that we're staying stable in our budget, not increasing it? So she wants to ensure that that's the case, as she did this year. Um, so yeah, so internally, there are all of those protective.
And, and there's like an open door, I mean, I know you, you guys have an open door, but.
And leaders are involved, you know, with Dr. Stern or with Dr. Travado, and then the principals smile, so.
So to the best of your knowledge, that there's nothing that the teachers feel that they're
Correct.
lacking at this.
That's correct, yeah, so it's meat based, it's not necessarily a want base either. Um, so, you know, anything that's coming forward for consideration is in the need category. So unless it's a programmatic change, you know, that we've already anticipated and haven't included the curriculum leaders with.
Is there a magical want list somewhere?
Well, I mean, everyone likes to turn in their wants.
Yes.
It depends on what's happening in that building. I mean, there are sometimes when something's needed because, uh, they might need a couple chairs or something small because they either have a larger class size or there's some broken chairs, or they'll need pads on the chairs so that they're not stuck. There's different things that they'll ask for, for, uh, sometimes what happens too is if they want like a laminator or something like that, the PTO may help chip in or say, you know, we'll help, we'll take that, we'll, you kind of have things like that. We work with our boosters for different items. The PTOs and so forth.
Other wants, um, through our established procedures through curriculum, you know, generally the wants are curricular ones. I would like these things for my classroom, so that'll come through the curriculum and representation from, um, the research here, which is helpful as well.
Um, if there's things that they want that might not kind of make the cut for budgets or whatever, um, and we can find like a, a way to, you know, make them happy like, you know, what they want. I, I don't know if you, that part you're already doing, you said the PTO works with them, but there, if there's a, something that, that we can instill or help with to not raise the budget, but also, you know, help the teachers.
So there are times where there can be some class savings that we observe, and when we see that that happens throughout as the year progresses, that it's not as expensive as we were budgeting for, that's an opportunity for some of those needs with already existing budget, so. You know, that, that's how we've handled it in the past, it's worked out really well. Um, the principals are really great at communicating with the three of us, um, you know, on those things that do pop up naturally throughout the year. And, uh, and we try to best meet their needs. I mean, that's just our commitment, is we're going to meet their, their needs to use a job that they've been hired to do, so. That's just our.
This whole budget process is, starts way back in November. And I have an open door with the building principals, they can leave as often as they want, as much help as they want. And we work through the different things that, we have a questionnaire that they'll start out ass, answering in November, which will be like, you know, what, what do you see in your building, uh, do you see, there's what needs do you see coming? Do you see staffing needs, what, uh, are there any types of repairs or there, what? Is there a bubble of students coming through, things like that? So that gives us a basis to start working with the buildings to see what they need. Um, and sometimes what we do, when we have those types of cost savings in other areas, so example would be the end of last year. last year, family consumer science in the middle school, there, two of their stoves were not working. And then one finally died, and these stoves are definitely early two thousands or even earlier, so then that funny line. So anyways, we, um.
Sounds great to me.
Yeah, so anyways, they died and we had some cost savings and the purchases in that department, they're pretty frugal when they are getting, making purchases for that for the students, with food and different things that they order for family consumer size. So we were able then to find some sales at Lowe's, you know, you get a debt model, some things like that, we were able to then because we knew the other stoves come to the end, it's like get new stoves. They right now are need two microwaves, so the same thing, we we get closer to the end of the year and they, they're then they've been maintaining or staying under their budget and they have a little bit extra funds, their microwaves are ancient, so.
Was it possible to see, a- and I know in the grand scheme of seventy five million dollars, like I get it, like a microwave is is nothing, but is it possible to see if, you know, maybe there's somebody in the community that could would have an extra one, I have four microwaves that I don't need, you know what I mean, so. Where they could donate it.
Well, the the difference would be, these are more of an industrial type because of the amount of usage and then the size of fitting into what we have here. Sometimes it's just easier when we're looking at, it's a two hundred dollar microwave, it's just easier for us to just get the microwave that fits our needs.
And and that's an example of if you will, shifting, right, so they're under their overall budget, just say it's, you know, this line here and then, you know, they basically have this much money, as Lori said, if they were under, right, and they have a five hundred dollar need, that may be okay, we're gonna redirect that to buy still in the same category, uh, but it meets the need and we, it's still within budget, it hasn't exceeded.
Yeah, I see that, um, and maybe microwave is a bad example, I just there, there's plenty of things that could maybe be donated and maybe it doesn't, it makes a one percent difference that some people donate, like to, um, the musical, um. I, I, it's through somewhere, I noticed that there seemed to be a lot of money maybe spent on like the stage production or props or something, um. And I didn't talk about it yet, but like that, if that was donated stuff, that could save money and so little by little, I'm wondering if that would be a, something that's possible.
We do have that in, uh, we have industries donate materials for the C C T C. Uh, we have, we've had people donate instruments because they're done using an instrument, so they donate the instruments. So we do have those, uh, items donated, supplies, uh, different things like that. So it does, does happen at times that we do have people donating things to us.
Okay, uh, well, on that topic, instead of eating out more time here, perhaps, like I could just shoot someone an email and learn a little bit more, see if there's different things that we could, you know, we could add, you know, without, again, adding something else to your already full plate, but that might easily happen, maybe I'll shoot that email this week. Um, and the teachers' contracts come up, like, what do we talk about that versus the number that's here?
Um, the teacher's contract ends June thirtieth of twenty five, so we'll start, uh, talking probably December of this year.
About, and that potentially goes to next year's budget, so it doesn't change this number.
Doesn't change this year's budget for twenty four, twenty five, so when we would start at the end of this year, um, December twenty four to start talking about a new contract, in hopes that we would be prepared for the budget season or during the budget season so that we know what we're looking at for the twenty five, twenty six full year. So and most of the time, it's, um, a three year contract.
Okay. Lori, a couple of sections, um, like fourteen thirty through fourteen ninety that go to zero. Is there any chance of that changing?
Yeah, so the fourteen nineties is our federal Title One program, so it's just a matter of I haven't gone in and read class teachers, so they're all in the eleven, tens, so fourteen ninety is our, is where I host all the title, the place of the title, Title One. It's mainly salaries and benefits in that fourteen.
And twenty three thirty, a tax assessment collection, um.
Yeah, I have to just move that to them, so, yeah, it's.
So to confirm that the salaries benefits are here, they're just not in the right final group.
That's part of my fifty one changes I have to put through after moving things around, so that I'll have, it will all be finished for. But that, yeah, it's in there, it's just, I have to move it.
Okay. And then under, um, thirty to a hundred, under student activities, what is the other purchase service? That goes from twenty seven, one twenty five, seventy three, three oh nine.
You know. Say that again, you're looking at.
Student activities under thirty two hundred, other purchase service. What is that?
Oh, the five hundreds, um, that could be, um, transportation. Uh, our transportation for athletics is five thirteen is the code, so it's in that five hundred range, it can be, uh,
Are they coaching staff?
No, all the coaching salaries were under the one hundreds.
Okay, so.
All coaching, so there's no, that's not, like, the five hundreds would be things like transportation, uh, postage, advertising, uh, else? Think of all codes, I think it'd be in my system, let me tell you. But, no, there are no, that's not, um, I holding those for.
Do we have to help like personally from the school pay for the refs or anything like that that might fall under?
Right, that is under the three hundreds, that's how they're services.
There a rubric of those codes?
Yeah, there is. It's, uh, I can print out and send to everyone if you want to see them, learn them all, it's, um. So, as I explained before, the, the first two sets of numbers is the fund, so general fund is ten. Cafeteria be fifty one, then the next four digits is the function area, so like twelve, ten is L S S, um, twelve thirty three is autism. Uh, so then the next three digits is the object or expense area, that being salaries, benefits. Professional services, those types of things. And then, uh, next three digits are funding sources, so I use zero zero one as a basic funding source when it's just a district expense. If it's a federal program, we have to separate out all federal programs, so it's given a specific code to identify it. So that's what that set of numbers. Next set is two digit, which is our building locations, because we are required to report things. Uh, S S reporting, not S R, S S reporting requires us to report things by building, so we have the two digits which we have eleven is N O E twelve, C C E thirteen, C B I S. And then if I can't, if it's something that's elementary based, but I can't split it between the building, it's fifteen, so that's elementary, then thirty one is old school, thirty two is high school, thirty five is secondary. And again, same situation, if I can't break it out, then I put it to the secondary level. So, but there is, there's a listing if you would like a copy.
Sounds like that branch is pretty deep.
Yeah, I can, I can send you a copy if you'd like.
Because that's an easy task, that would be bold, it's a pain, don't worry about it.
Oh, no, it's, it's just going to be long.
Okay, we're, we've got, uh, about twenty minutes left, we haven't touched the audit yet, so I'd like to try to wrap up the questions here, I can link to the audit, are there any additional questions? Okay.
I guess my question would be, do we need to have meeting next Tuesday? Stayed to the questions for, can we move to April first?
So I would see Tuesday's meetings as we're kind of wrapping this part of, is there additional burning questions that we would need to review next Tuesday, or are we comfortable with what we've got, and then we'll present that to, uh, the public on April.
Well, ultimately, are are there any questions that couldn't be answered just by emailing you? Maybe that's another way to put it.
Yeah, I, I, I think the remainder of my questions are, that's a bold question, but they're relevant to this, and I don't, I don't feel I don't know about that Tuesday is necessary.
Well, that's what, that's just what I think.
Well, happy birthday, don't say anything.
All right. What I'm hearing is nobody needs next Tuesday.
All right, I will remove that calendar invite from everybody's calendar.
Great, thank you. So then, April first, we'll, if you have questions, send them, um, then we'll move into the public presentation for April first.
Okay.
That's awesome, thank you. Um. Okay, so moving on to the audit, um, just to explain a little bit. This is an audit that we are required to have every year, and it's performed by a local audit firm that we hire. There's several pieces to the audit, the main thing that they do is when they come in, they are certifying that we are properly, we have proper procedures in place, they're certified that our they look through our bank statements, they pull, sample expenses, they check to make sure the procedures that we were talking about, that there's an invoice, there's, um, signature, that's approved. So they make sure that all of those things follow our procedures, um. We're also required to have this audit because of the federal funding, the different funds that we have. So this audit gets sent then to multiple places. And because we have bonds, we're also required to, I have to upload, that's a whole nother story, but I have to upload uh, in a PDF readable form, our audit, our budget, these A F R pages, and then some operating data, uh, to the S, to our M I, it's called the M I reporting, it's for all the bonds, where anyone who has purchased a bond, they can look and see and ensure that you're credit worthy and that you're following procedures. So all of this is done for multiple purposes. Um, when we look through the audit, I'll just go through real quick. You'll see that there's the first part, there is a, it's called an M D N A, it's a management discussion analysis, and that piece, basically, I'm preparing that report for the auditors, and it's just taking our financial data and putting it in multiple different ways of saying the same thing. So that's, um, parts seven, pages seven through sixteen. So another important area is if we go to, I'm not gonna go through all of it, it is a lot. But I, I think there's a couple pages that we need to look at. When you look at page twenty one, that shows you the statement of revenues and expenditures our fund balance, and where we ended up with each of our funds. You'll see across the top, we'll have the general fund, our construction fund, capital reserve, and then at the end, to the par rates, the total. But it goes through the revenues, expenditures, and then where we ended up, the really fund balance as of July one to and then where we ended up July thirty. That's an important page. So then, the rest of the book basically goes through different ways of viewing the information. Um, and it goes through the governmental funds, which are the funds that I just spoke of, but they, we also have our proprietary fund, which is our cafeteria, so there's information regarding cafeteria, proprietary funds. And then we also have our fiduciary funds, which are funds for monies that we basically are holding but are not our money, for example, if we have, if there's, um, an endowment, someone loses money and wants to give it each year five hundred dollars off, so it's something, that's not our money to spend, we're just holding it. Uh, student activities are another example of fiduciary funds where that's their money, we don't control it, we don't spend it. So, but we're just the holders of it, and gate, gatekeeper. So, um, this book that goes through all of those jobs basically saying, repeating each of the types of statements. And then there are the notes to the financials, which is twenty eight to fifty eight, there's a lot of notes. And it also continues to explain some of the information, the supplementary information will give you a little more detail on some of the financials, this is something that if you're bored, you can sit and read. But it's a lot, and I can always answer questions after you get through it. So then we go to the main page and the burning question at the end, which is page seventy three. So that's always where, if I wanted to do anything, I would say that. So that's like getting the best, finding out the results at the beginning. The page seventy three is the summary of the results of the audit, um, basically tells you what our opinion is. And it also goes through whether or not we've had any findings, and if there were findings in the federal programs. So those are the two things, B and C are the two areas that I always look at first. That's it.
So this says that you did everything right, there was no hidden money, there were no questions and no mistakes.
That's what it's saying.
That is wonderful. Yeah, and that is, um, massive thanks and appreciation to Mrs. Duncan as the leader of this, and it's all of that collaborative, working together from the teachers to the administrators to district office personnel in order for this to happen. Everybody has to be rowing in the same direction for, for the district to receive the results that we did, so I do appreciate, want to publicly acknowledge Lori, um, as well as her administrative team and our faculty and staff.
I do have to, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
I do have to say that I have an extremely talented staff. We all work well together and have fun, but we get the job done. Sometimes, maybe not viewed in the best light, but we're doing what we have to do and then we ask questions, and sometimes we say no, maybe a lot we say no, but it's what we have to do to keep everything at the first.
Question, Lori, just for, just to try to understand, so in the seventy three number five, an unmodified opinion was issued on why it's the federal programs testing. What does that mean?
An unmodified opinion is just saying that we've completed, I think there's modified opinion, unmodified, uh, adverse. adverse. So our, this is just, uh, unmodified is basically a clean reporting process.
So does that mean that there wasn't like an initial, like initially they were like, go fix this?
And then we modified it.
No, no.
So that means that that didn't happen.
Right.
So that was like first out of the gate and we're ready to go.
Yes. There are things that we needed to correct. They'd be listed here unless it's like of a low scope, but if there were things that we needed to correct or if they had recommendation suggestions, they would all be listed here.
And then the other question is on number nine. So it's, is, uh, are districts determined to not be a low-risk audit?
So with the change in COVID reporting, they changed up a date. So when our auditors filed, they had to pop to the F A C our report and they start the reporting process. So one of the things that they do is this all has to be reported in a time, certain time. But with COVID, they changed the timing. And our last report was not sent in the timeframe. It doesn't affect any of our, so, because I questioned it too. It does not, because we've always been, we're not, we're considered a low risk. So they're saying, they're telling me that this will have no impact, that we had no findings. It's just that a date was missed when they initially filed. They have to start that filing process. And then I go in and just have to sign off that it was completed. So it was a date that was missed last year. And they're telling me it was due to COVID change in dates.
Okay.
So we're hoping then with next year, we'll go back to being but I, it hasn't affected anything that I can tell because we have not, our Esser funds have not been questioned. So
And this is the last, the, the Esser funds run out in the fall.
Um, September 30th of 24, our Esser funds will need to be completed. Hopefully we all finished up before then.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you and thank you to your team.
That's one of the questions that I had was in reference to maybe like COVID funding or grants or whatever from the past. Where could that have been given or taken out of? You know what I mean?
So any, it would be all part of under our, so we have our local revenue, we have our state revenue, and then we have federal revenue. So they all have different codes to keep it separate. Um, the COVID funds were our Esser funds. Mental health, PCCD, mental health, or any of those types of grants are all under the 8000s listing. It's a federal program coding. So that's what all the funds, they're part of the budget. So what we did, because Essers was coming to the end and we had received back when it first came out, we received as one, as two, as three. Budget wise, didn't want to become dependent on those funds because they were going away. It was a one-time situation. So we've been working to eliminate that. So when you look at the, the sheets I gave you, the Esser bunch, you'll see that it's down to 330, 335,000 or something. Exact numbers, but I've been working that money out of the budget because it was not going to be sustained. So it was originally
Like some glass.
Right. So it was like $4 million to spend on, that's a glass, but, and I'm taking all the grants and buying them to say that amount. But it wasn't to continue forever. So we didn't want to become dependent on those funds. So next year, the next budget, 25, 26, there'll be no Esser funds in there. They'll be, people will be gone. So that was the purpose of trying to work our way out of that. And some of the things though that have happened is there are certain things that we've had to start it and had to maintain. Because the funds were to have additional guidance, counselors, mental health services and things like that for students, different things they need. So the problem is then you have to figure out how to continue to maintain them, but the funding went away. So that, that's always the difficult situation when you get funds. If you're spending them on something that's going to continue to be an expense, it's very difficult then to have to maintain it through the district.
Okay, we got about five minutes. Any other questions related to the audit? All right. Thank you, Mrs. Duncan.
Thank you.
Uh, I will open it up for public comment. How about the president? How about online?
Uh, there is none online.
Okay. Then, uh, could I get a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole meeting? Thank you. Your second. Thank you. We will call the, uh, committee or the, uh, meeting of the whole, uh, concluded at, uh, 6:50.